Welcome back. We will now resume the committee's public hearing for the inquiry into Victoria's Planning Provisions Amendments, V257, V267, and VC274. Before we introduce the next speakers, just a little bit of advice. All evidence taken is protected by parliamentary privilege as provided by the Constitution Act 1975 and the provisions of the Legislative Council Standing Orders. Therefore, the information you provide during the hearing is protected by law. You are protected against any action for what you say during this hearing, but if you go elsewhere and repeat the same things, these comments may not be protected by this privilege. Any deliberately false evidence or misleading of the committee may be considered a contempt of parliament. All evidence is being recorded, and you will be provided with a proof version of the transcript following the hearing. Transcripts will ultimately be made public and posted on the committee's website. For the hands-off record, can you please state your name and organisations that you're representing here today?
Jim Holdsworth, representing Charter 29.
And Michael Buxton, Charter 29, I guess RMIT in a kind of way as well.
Stephen Thorne, and Charter 29.
Thank you very much. Welcome, and we thank you for coming along today. Can I give you 10 minutes to please just make a statement to the committee?
Good. Thanks very much. Thanks for the invitation. Very pleased to be able to come along and contribute if we can. What we thought we'd do to just, to begin with, is to just deal with the question of the relevance and the relationship between the amendments and the objectives of the Act. So let's go to the very beginning and the fundamental brief that the committee has, not deal with any of the substantive issues that they'll undoubtedly come out in the discussion. So I'll just go through the relationship between the amendments and the objectives, stop there, and we'll just let the rest come out in questions and discussion. Is that okay?
Great stuff.
Okay. So, under the, I mean, I think the brief of the committee is a very important one because it goes to the heart of the issue here. The duties of a planning authority, as we know, specifically refer to the requirement under Section 12.1A for a planning authority to implement the objectives of planning in Victoria. And the Minister for Planning is the planning authority for these three amendments. So the Minister, under the Act, is bound to implement those objectives, and it's clear that that requirement has not been met, either in the framing of the amendments, the exhibiting of them, or the content of them. We won't talk about the content to begin with, but we'll come back to that. The Ministers, we've used Section 20, Part 4, to implement these three amendments, which is a ministerial amendment without exhibition notice. And I think the interesting thing about this is that this is part of a pattern, and it's really not strictly relevant to these three in themselves, but I think we should see these three amendments as part of a pattern. There have been now eight amendments of this kind in 18 months that are fundamental, involve fundamental changes to the planning system, and they're radical. They're the most radical rewriting of critical parts of the planning system since the Act was first introduced. And in addition, there have been, in previous years, seven amendments of that kind on projects such as the level crossing removals, school approvals, and so on. So I think the point here is that these three amendments are part of a pattern that has radically altered the way planning is done in this state under the Act. And the worrying thing about it is that it's now become the norm almost. This is part of the government business. This is the way they operate when there's really big changes to be made. And what do they all involve? Well firstly, the preparation of these amendments, and we'll just go back to these three for the moment, their preparation without community consultation with very little local government involvement. It's basically a secret, private process. It has involved clearly members of the property industry and other people, insiders within the Labor Party and so on. So they've been prepared without that consultation. They haven't been exhibited, contrary to all the expectations of a proper process and normal procedure under the Act. And these procedures are very detailed under Part 2.8A, 8B, and Part 3 of the Act. They're quite extensive. And they also have in common either the removal or the fundamental lessening of third-party rights. So they're the three characteristics: the preparation, and the exhibiting, and the removal of third-party rights. They all have that in common. They differ marginally on the third-party right removal in their preparation, but that's fundamentally the formula. They, these three processes then are inconsistent with the provisions of the Act, which require the Minister in the preparation of such fundamental amendments to go through a very different procedure than the one that they've followed under this current process. And I'll just mention two provisions of the Act, two objectives of the Act initially, and then two more, and then we'll stop because that's the objectives and the process. Okay. So, normal procedure is outlined under Part 3 of the Act, detailed under Section 17 to 19. And the interesting thing about that procedure is they're all intricately related to other objectives. So there's an interconnection here between the objectives. And the two that are most concerning here are to ensure that those affected by proposals for the use, development, or protection of land or changes in planning policy receive appropriate notice, and that clearly hasn't been met. That's Section 1A1, and Section I, and Section 1HA, to provide an accessible process for the just and timely review of decisions without unnecessary formality. And as I said, the processes within the amendments remove that, the right of review totally. And to finish on this introductory comments, if we go to the Section 4, two parts that are most relevant, I think relate to the facilitation of development. So the Act specifically refers to how the government should facilitate development, and in following, two principles. Section 4.1F, to facilitate development in accordance with the objectives set out in all the other paragraphs, and they're outlined, we won't go into those. And Section 4.2E, to facilitate development which achieves the objectives of planning. So there's an interconnection between these Acts, these objectives, and they clearly refer to a normal procedure. The extensive use of 20 Part 4 breaches that normal procedure, and it is inconsistent. The use of that approach is inconsistent with the very objectives of the Act that the Minister, under the Act, is bound to uphold.
Can we leave that there for the moment?
Leave that there.
Thank you very much. Just for committee members, we'll drop back to five minutes per question, just to get us through this time slot. I will kick off. Thank you very much for your presentation and being with us today. The committee's heard quite a bit about deemed-to-comply provisions in the Planning Scheme Amendments, and whether or not they will, whether they are problematic, and whether they will actually achieve the goals that are intended. Could I invite you to comment on that issue?
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr Chair. I'm not a statutory planner, I'm an architect and urban designer, so I don't delve too deeply into that. But the principle, I think, is an important element of what's proposed. We know how difficult it is to get permission for, or to get approval through the process and get construction going, and any move that can truncate that process has to be seen as, in principle, a good one. The removal of third-party rights is a device that can speed that process up, but Charter 29 and other people's view is that if there are clear and simple mandatory planning rules in the planning scheme that have been thought through, agreed at state and local government level, then the deemed-to-comply, the area under which deemed-to-comply can be applicable, can increase, so that there is no debate about that number of issues. And then it comes down to an acceptance in advance of that process commencing, that this is what we're going to do in this area, under whatever control it might be, build form, land use, height, setbacks, environmental requirements, et cetera, et cetera, can be enshrined in the planning scheme and then can be seen to have, after, once it's been through that process of acceptance by the community, then many things can fall within that deemed-to-comply, rather than what appears to be the proposal at the moment, and that is that many things are put into that basket without having been thoroughly agreed to and consented to by the larger community. I think that's the approach that we take in that regard.
The deemed-to-comply provisions, I mean, they conflict fundamentally with those objectives of the Act that I've just talked about, to ensure that those affected by proposals for the use, development, and so on of land have the right to be heard. So if the government wants to bring in such radical deemed-to-comply provisions, it either should conform to the objective that's clearly outlined in a number of cases under the Act, or get rid of that objective, but stop pretending that they're acting under the provisions of the Act, because they're not, right? So that's one fundamental inconsistency that the government just glosses over, that the deemed-to-comply provisions are a fundamental alteration to the accepted rights of community members. I mean, that's what they're designed to do. And the problem with these deemed-to-comply rules is that they radically, they not only do that, and they do it very effectively, but they radically reduce the standards that are applying even now under ResCode. So if we look at, if we look at the provisions of ResCode, the standards on overshadowing and a whole series of them are fundamentally altered. So the deemed-to-comply standards, if a development conforms to those, it just gets ticked off. And there's a fundamental deception here. The government allows a council to notify residents, right, and it allows objections, but they can do no good. I mean, it's impossible for any objection to, if the application conforms to the standards, then the application will be just ticked off. So there's a pretence here that the government is allowing objections, when it's not, right? And there's no appeal, of course. So they're the two problems. It's a removal of the democratic rights of people, and as Jim said, this can be managed through, for example, mandatory clauses that, but they have to be worked through with communities. There has to be proper prior consultation, exhibition of amendments, there's got to be a proper process in bringing in those mandatory provisions that involve the people who are affected by them. And we support mandatory provisions, for example, height controls, I mean, in the right. But the type of height controls that are then imposed on people, that people don't have, have had no say in developing and are fundamentally object to, is wrong, because they've never been consulted in the process. And so that's, they're the double problems. And if we don't get it right in the first place through proper broad consultation, we're going to end up with the provisions that we've got in the new Clause 55.
Thank you so much. Mr Davis?
I'm going to be very quick with a few questions and just try to get a bit of a yes and a no. It's your understanding that the consultation was not undertaken here in the broad way that the Act would envisage?
No, it wasn't. I mean, in our submission, we quoted one of the Melbourne University studies which looked at this, and reviewed the whole thing, but no, there's no, the consultation was not adequate at any level.
Moving on from that, it's also your understanding, reading your submission, seeing some of the things you've said publicly, that this won't achieve what the government is seeking to achieve, which is more affordable housing that everyone wants?
No, and that's the other key point about the deemed-to-comply and the other standards that have been brought in under the three amendments. They will not achieve what the government says that they will achieve. No.
The second, or the third thing I'd ask you is, is there an alternative way of getting some of these much-needed housing options into the system without destroying the democratic rights and whilst protecting a lot of the values, whether it's vegetation or heritage, that we think are important, or I think are important?
There is, and I'll ask Steve to talk about this if I could, because I think this goes to the heart of what we're trying to propose here, that firstly, there is no need for this radical revision in the way that it's been developed. Secondly, it's going to have a range of detrimental impacts that totally contradict the government's claims, claimed benefits, for example, for affordable housing. It's not going to help affordable housing. It's not going to increase the supply of housing, right? So it's going to contradict, they're going to contradict, and we'll see that this will happen, the claims made for them. And thirdly, there are better ways. Now, we've just spent a couple of months talking with the industry, talking with property research teams, we've canvassed this widely about what could be a feasible way to get a better outcome that is consistent with the democratic principles of the Act, and it will avoid those detrimental consequences, and it will achieve what we all want. And perhaps, if I can just quickly refer to Steve?
Very briefly. I was the third last director of urban design in the state government, under the Bracks and Brumby governments, Minister Thwaites and De La Huntie. And the process we followed through the Melbourne 2030 was highly consultative, because what was discovered clearly was that what is required both by community groups as well as by developers is a sense of certainty. And that certainty is essential before you end up in a deemed-to-comply condition, because you have to have the conversations before you arrive at, if you like, the curtain closing.
So that's a process answer? You'd make sure that you do consult, make sure you do talk to the industry and the, and community and councils and so forth?
Yes.
But is there sufficient land available? Is there sufficient capacity to get more housing available without these draconian and undemocratic steps?
I would argue that that's not known yet, because we haven't been through the process to determine where these things happen.
But it may very well be?
There may well be.
You wouldn't be counting that out?
No, not at all.
There have been studies done which have actually looked at this. CoreLogic did one last year and found that over a million dwellings can be provided by this kind of consultative process, which RMIT did a study back in 2016 which showed roughly the same result. And we've consulted other firms, Value Advisory Partners, for example, have developed a methodology, along with most of these other firms, which is really looking at what they call ABS mesh blocks, so going in a very small scale into a locality and working out under the current zones what the capacity is, and then aggregating that while accounting for a whole series of factors of the type Steve would be used to. So by a proper detailed analysis of what can be built where, under the current rules, there are models which have come up with solutions which suggest this.
Additional capacity?
There is capacity, and it's a much better process, because it's one that brings the community, the property industry, government, and local government. Local government, we believe, has to be key here, and they're already doing this in many cases, right? I mean, Burandara and others, councils have employed consulting firms like SGS Planning, and they've worked out what they can deliver in the capacity in their municipalities. Councils, the better councils are already doing this, and they're coming up with the right answers. So fundamentally, it's a fine-grained analysis of how to build what where through a process of consultation. And you get a better result that people accept, you get rid of the division, and you come up with the answers that will stay in place.
Mr Davis? Thank you. I'm just going to stop you there, I'm afraid. Mr Bachelor?
Thanks, Chair. Gentlemen, thanks so much for coming in today. Lots to talk about. Before I get into the nitty-gritty, Charter 29, what's the genesis? What's the twock?
Charter 29?
Yeah, Charter 29.
Yeah, it's a group of professionals. There's a core of five of us, the three of us and a couple of others, with architectural, academic, planning, and urban design backgrounds, with a group of about a dozen other urban professionals behind us in all the other supporting disciplines. Charter 29 is a name we've been going as a pro bono group of interested, active planners and people in Melbourne. We've been going for about five years. Charter 29 is actually our name dreamt up because in 1929, the absolutely seminal, magnificent Worktown Planning Commission for Melbourne's Growth delivered its report. So in 96 years from that, if ever you can find a copy, it's an extraordinary document. Not all of the recommendations in that have yet been implemented, but it, we-
Still trying, you say?
I guess, no. So that's where Charter 29 comes. And we started being interested in the problems of outer urban sprawl and the poor outcomes that are happening there.
Yeah.
And now we've directed our attention to the issue we're talking about today.
So interested in, so genesis from problems of sprawl?
Correct.
So pro-density?
Well, definitely. And I mean, clearly, Melbourne, as a very low-density city, particularly in its post-war areas, is not meeting the objectives of a medium-density city with good population or density gradients, or grading away from activity centres, from high to medium to townhouses to singles.
So you think there is capacity in the system to improve densification of our-
Building on what you've just heard in answer to Mr Davis's question, there is clearly the process that Professor Buxton talked about to work with council. We had a workshop with six Metro Council, the directors of planning. They came to us at a meeting at RMIT a couple of weeks ago, and they said, "We know how to do this, to work out what the capacity is within our municipal area, using the techniques that Michael just talked about, to identify where you can do more infill development without pulling down what's there."
What does that infill development look like? We have previous witness, Dr Rowley, said that he was an advocate for this kind of, you know, in the near-transport areas, the three-to-four-story neighbourhoods.
Yes.
Which is quite different to where some of the places that we see at the moment.
Not these amendments.
Is that what you think is where our suburbs should be, you know, three-to-four-story dwellings?
Mr Bachelor, is in part, yes. Clearly where it is within walkable distance of community facilities, public transport, et cetera, et cetera.
So that kind of, the concept of a, not that you would use these words, we use these words, of a sort of walkable catchment?
Yes.
You think that three-to-four-story dwellings are appropriate in that area?
And it's interesting that people like the NIMBY group, who are supporting a much more in-dense, we're not opposed to that principle of finding where you can do medium and lower-rise housing within existing neighbourhood communities. The problem with the plan as it is now on the table is that it talks about housing, 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 and not the essential supporting infrastructure of local employment, schools, community facilities, increased public transport, and let alone the problem of-
But fundamentally, you think that the increasing densification around those transport nodes is-
It can occur, in principle, but modelled the way that Professor Buxton was just talking.
Professor Buxton, I just wanted, your submission says that these plans were drawn up in secret. You say that, in your opening statement, you said that they had radically altered the schemes, and at one point you mentioned that they were developed by insiders within the Labor Party. I mean, what do you mean by that in particular? Do you think that these planning schemes are beyond the powers of the Minister to enact under the Planning and Environment Act?
They're not beyond his power, not beyond the Minister's powers, under 20 Part 4, clearly, because the Minister, the government's brought them in. But they contradict the objectives, that's the point.
But when you talk about insiders within the Labor Party, what do you mean?
People like you.
Well, I, okay.
Are you just casting aspersions over the Minister?
No, no, not at all.
No, you did.
No, no, I'm saying that these-
What do you mean by that?
These rules were developed as a political exercise. I don't doubt that there was an idealistic motive at all. I'm not casting aspersions on anybody, I'm just talking about the process. And the process has been well documented. I've documented it, I've published material on it. It was, there was close relationships with the property industry, and I went personally, I was invited to some meetings to consider the development of such amendments, and I walked in and I was shocked to find who was there. And I refused to participate in the meetings and I left them.
Who was there?
Okay. Keep moving. Thank you. Dr Mansfield?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for appearing today. I was interested in your submission around, your comments around affordability and the impact that these Planning Scheme Amendments are likely to have or not have on affordability. They've been put out there as increasing the supply of affordable housing, and that I think that's something pretty much everyone here today could agree is something we should be aiming for. But you've indicated in your submission that sometimes an increase in supply doesn't translate to a decrease in price. You know, we often hear in this argument, it's very sort of, there's a simplistic supply-demand curve, that increased supply, cost goes down. Why might that not be the case in a housing market or with the, you know, when it comes to the changes that are being proposed here?
Look, I think that's one of the most fundamental questions to answer, to gain an understanding of what's being proposed. As some of my academic colleagues in Sydney University say, houses are not like bananas, right? If you have a big storm up in Queensland, there's a lack of bananas, the price goes up. That's not, that's not how the housing market works often, right? The housing market is an incredibly complex operation, and a really good example of demand-supply interaction was through COVID, when everybody expected that the reduction in immigration would lead to housing prices fall and vacancy rates rise, and that didn't happen. And one of the main reasons it didn't happen was that a lot of people who were in shared housing went and moved into their own properties. So there's a huge elasticity in demand, and those interactions are very complicated. But basically, the view that if you just, the NIMBY group and the government certainly has brought this narrative, if you just rezone vast areas of a city, that the price of land will fall and affordable housing will become feasible, is so naive and simplistic. And it's been proved to be wrong constantly. Some of these advocates point to Auckland as an example, and Auckland made little, if any, difference, some people argue no difference, and it made things worse from the price of housing. It's one of the most unaffordable cities in the world years later. I mean, a really great example of just rezoning vast areas of land and seeing the difference was, as I mentioned, we mentioned in the submission, the Fisherman's Ban rezoning, a vast area of land, and it led to massive price increases, right? And it hasn't led to monumental home construction, much less-
Huge failure.
Much less affordable housing. So we know that what's happening in Melbourne at the moment is that any depreciation in the number of dwellings built has nothing whatsoever to do with the planning system, and that's the fault that the government has fallen for. There are, this idea of, you know, sort of a middle-ring drought, you know, that there is this failure in the middle-ring suburbs to build houses- is quite false. There's been absolutely no failure to build houses in the middle-ring suburbs. There's no missing middle. There's been twice as many multi-unit dwellings built since 2005 in Melbourne's middle-ring and established suburbs as all the monumental high-rises that we see in the inner suburbs and the CBD and the big brownfield sites. So, but we do know that there are large numbers of these dwellings that are not being occupied, and a huge number of approvals. It's lessening a bit this year, but the huge number of approvals that have not been acted upon. And that's got nothing to do with the planning system, it's got everything to do with the costs of building. Supply chain problems, labour chain, and I'm not going to go through all this because you can read it in here, but we've mentioned representatives of the property research institutes, developers themselves, who talk about this and who reiterate that that's been the problem. So the idea that you can just rezone vast areas of land and everything will be solved is a false hope, as the developers themselves are saying. So that's why we're saying, you've got to look in detail at what you can build where and narrow it down to a fine-grained analysis.
Thank you. Mrs. Crozier.
Thank you very much Chair, thank you, gentlemen, for being before us. Most interesting, and we do thank you for that vast amount of experience that you've had. I want to go back to the points around consultation that you've raised. And you did say in your submission that local councils were not adequately consulted on the preparation of the amendments. You talk about that some were prepared in secret, some council officers were, didn't even have the knowledge of what was going on, and superior officers were often involved in confidentiality agreements. Can you provide to the committee a bit more information around what your concerns are and what you understand, given that those, what you put into the submission? Because I think that is terribly concerning, given what you have claimed in your submission.
Well, with the local government, clearly the government was determined to keep the elected councillors out of the process of developing as much as possible. There were, and it depends on the amendment, but there were processes that did sometimes involve officers from some councils. But all we can do is go back and explain what councils have told us. And the councils tell us.
Was that a number of councils that told you the same thing?
Yes.
One or two or multiple?
Yeah, no, no.
How many?
It was five.
It was five in that meeting.
In that meeting.
But I think there's probably another six or seven that have talked to me explicitly.
On top of that five?
On top of that five.
So you're talking almost a dozen councils have had this same experience?
And they, and the concern is, often there weren't confidentiality agreements, but the expectation that any officer consulted would not, certainly not consult the council or write any reports. And senior officers have told us of their concern about that process.
Yep. Can I, thank you. Can I move on to the area around the reference groups? And you say the managed consultation. Are you confident that they were properly assembled, if you like, or consulted? Those reference, community reference groups were properly, that process was also properly undertaken? Has anyone got any thoughts on that?
I wasn't in that. No. Well, once again, we were involved in some of the consultation processes as a group, as individuals and as a group. We went to, we went to a number for the discussion of the modelling techniques that were being undertaken for two-five-seven. We were involved in consultation processes for the Victoria Plan, the new Victoria Plan. And our experience collates exactly with what resident groups have told us. That is, that there were certain items that were put on the table to be discussed, that alternative views were either discouraged or not discussed. So the agenda was focused and limited to what the government outlined. And it was very difficult to find any result from even discussing those topics. Nothing seemed to change.
Are you aware that the minister actually cherry-picked some of those people on those reference groups and took people out, removed people?
No.
No?
No.
Thank you. I want to go back to that issue around where you said you were shocked by, when, in answer to Mr. Bachelor's question, you were shocked as to who was in the meetings and then you refused to participate. Why were you shocked?
Well, I, I, I mean, I worked in the planning as a senior officer in the planning department for 12 years, right? And, and I've been, and we all have, we've been brought up on the principle that major planning changes should be broadly discussed and that there should be a broad range of people involved in them. And I just, I just thought that this was a closed approach. It was very limited, it was, it consisted of people that the government could trust. Clearly, they couldn't trust me, I suppose.
So what, were they not looking for the expertise? Were they not looking for the expertise that is required for this process, do you think? Or was it a closed group of people that were going to give the government the answers they wanted to hear?
Oh, look, I shouldn't comment on people's expertise.
But you said you were shocked and you didn't want to participate. So I think that's a significant, from somebody so esteemed as yourself with this knowledge, and as you say, the three of you got immense experience in this area. So I find that concerning, that you were so concerned about who was in that meeting and that expertise that was being provided.
Yeah, I was concerned.
Okay, no more questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Crozier.
Thank you Chair, and thank you for your attendance today. So we go back to the topic of the urban sprawl, the outer urban sprawl. And I understand that Plan Melbourne, or now Plan for Victoria, set a target of 70% of new development within established areas and 30% within greenfield suburbs. Can you walk us through the merit of that approach?
Originally, that formula was adopted for Melbourne 2030 in 2002. It was never met. It was consistently 50, 48, 55%. So the development amounts were roughly half and half, established city and the growth areas. There were attempts to reinforce it, but they all failed. And the government's again reiterating that. And I guess our concern, having begun in the outer areas, where we felt that the development type in the growth corridors was the wrong type. It was very little diversity of housing and all the transport and other accessibility issues that we all know about. We felt that, and at RMIT, we did research into this, that you could put a lot more people into those growth areas without expanding the urban growth boundary, and you can have a much greater variability of dwellings, dwelling types, and a much better quality of life. And, but the aim of the 70/30 split should be stuck to, yes, and we agree with that. We, the point isn't that split. And the fault that the government has adopted is that it's accepted now, and quite rightly, that we need to try to get back to that 70/30 split because it hasn't been met, it's 50/50, and that's wrong. But the fault that the government's, the government's approach is, it said the only way to get, to reach that 70% in the established city is to raise huge areas of the established city, right? And take away the things that make Melbourne such a livable place that people value. You know, for example, it's heritage and amenity and all the other aspects of Melbourne. And now our point is, that sort of broad-brush rezoning through amendments such as this is not going to achieve what it wants, but it's the wrong way to go because it's going to destroy what makes Melbourne a great city. And finally, it's not necessary. The approach we're talking about can achieve that while retaining your heritage areas. Now, our question in our, in our, in our work is, why would any government adopt a method to achieve a laudable aim that we all agree with in such a draconian, destructive manner? That's our question.
Yeah, well, I think, I'd say your question, but I think where I'm coming from is that if you use, for example, the urban sprawl, when I look at the likes of Greavall up to Wallon, from then across from the Hume Highway up to Wallon again, and then you head over to Mill Park and then up to now Littlesey, and all within that infill area.
Yep.
Can't continue on doing things like that.
No, of course not.
And we've got to figure out, you know, bringing it back into the city and redensification areas there. What's your view on that?
I think there's, you raise a really good topic because if we're going to house a growing population in Greater Melbourne, forget about the regions for the minute, that potential is another story. We're doing it either by, as proposed, to continue the sprawl within the urban growth boundary and maybe extend it, which would be terrible, or jam more people into the urban area with all the attendant problems that we know about that. The rhetorical question is, why are we allowing the very low-density urban sprawl with poor servicing to continue? And that was our early couple of reports, were about how to do that better. And therefore, you might be able to increase the percentage of people who live in new suburbs, well-served, new communities, that are proper, well-rounded communities, without unduly tackling the quality of life and urban existence and existing buildings and heritage and streetscapes and amenity within the established areas by pulling down viable dwellings and replacing them with more. The balance is out, it's out of whack at the moment. And this solution through these amendments is just going to exacerbate or create a problem we don't have and we don't need. And we could be doing it a whole lot better within the sort of constraints that Michael outlined earlier, within the established areas and the activity centres within it, or doing it better on the outer fringe.
All righty, thank you. Mr. Curly.
Thank you Chair, good afternoon. We briefly touched on international jurisdictions earlier with reference to Auckland. Can I just ask the panel, where do you see parts of the world where planning for density, planning for a growing community, where that's being done well? And can you point to any particular planning measures in those places that actually are making more affordable homes available?
Steve can talk about this and then I'll give one quick example.
Look at Barcelona. And what they do is, very cleverly, they offer local government infrastructure prior to actually providing that infrastructure, as long as there is a guarantee with regards to densities, to affordability, and, and I guess avoiding the sprawl problem. So they get good quality urban development happening and guaranteed by local government because they've signed up to a particular piece of infrastructure being delivered to them. That's one example.
Amsterdam.
Amsterdam, another one.
Fantastic.
What's the characteristics for Amsterdam, for example?
Amsterdam, a growing city, but high-density, on the fringe, highly environmentally sustainable, directly connected to the main centre of the town by a tram network that's comparable to Melbourne's. And it's, it's a relatively small city compared to Melbourne's sprawl. I don't know what the population of Amsterdam is, but they are doing it right, much the model that Steve's just outlined. And there are other examples.
Most of the Northern European, most of the Northern European cities are doing this really well. One of the best examples I've seen is California and the West Coast, including the North West Coast. California, Los Angeles, San Francisco, and the Bay Area, if we just take that. They retain their historic main street areas. You go along the Caltrain area, along the Bay Area, and there's town after town that, you know, they're not in century town, villages originally, they've been caught up in the sprawl. They make sure they retain those, so they retain their heritage, they retain their main streets, and they retain heritage buildings. And they've, and they've done what we're basically talking about. We've used that model. They identify the land opportunities and they work out what to build where. So they're building mainly four-story apartments and a lot of, a lot of two, two-to-three-story townhouse-type development. They've kept their heritage and they've got incredible results. I went on a tour there in 2017 with the Property Council, and the Property Council members were amazed to see this stuff. And I was too, I didn't think it was so extensive. But they, it was really high-quality development, mainly a lot of build-to-rent material. And it was based on height controls and mandatory affordable housing targets, right? Mandatory, 20% to 25% affordable housing. We had addresses from the top property people in the United States coming to these meetings to address the Property Council representatives. And they were asked, how can you get away with mandatory affordable housing targets? And their answer was, well, once they're accepted, they become part of the new regime and the developers find ways to do it. So there are many ways, many areas this is being done well.
Can I potentially expand on that even further? If we're talking about like mandatory targets, potentially sort of inclusionary zoning-type approaches, can you point to jurisdictions where that's especially being done well and what we could learn from those instances to bring to Melbourne?
Several hundred American cities do it.
Any standouts out of those?
I can send you their names. I can say Portland, but all through the United States. I mean, it's a fairly standard, not, I wouldn't say it's dominant, but it's frequently done in American cities. And it's done on the western seaboard, across the whole state.
And what sort of proportions are we talking about it with regard to percentages? Affordable, are there social homes in the mix there? What do those settings look like?
There are, there are settings such as those. The key question to this stuff is the how question and the process by which you go about this. And, you know, within our own city, we ran a process called Inquiry by Design, where we actually used the design process as a mechanism to have a conversation with both the developers but also with communities. That was the Melbourne 2030 process, where we worked through the 70/30 split and how these things would play out. And there was a mechanism called an Urban Design Framework, which was the thing that was established, that then set the parameters and the numbers for the kinds of things that you would expect to develop over time.
Thank you.
Mrs. MacArthur.
Oh, thank you Chair, thank you gentlemen for being here. And just following on from Mr. Pupelli, I mean, Pupelli's great questions. Why do you think this government would not have explored all the best alternatives around the world before they embarked on this, as you said, radical rewriting of the Planning Act? Not been on enough trips overseas or?
I can't speak for the government. Look, I do have a view on that, but it's probably not helpful. But it's, I think when governments tend to look inward and not outward and tend to talk to a certain number and type of interest groups, you will get a particular approach. And our view is that the broader the conversation, the more people involved. I mean, the community shouldn't be regarded as the enemy. I mean, you get better outcomes if you involve a broader range. So that's why we've recommended that, go back to the Plan Melbourne, 2017 Plan Melbourne for Melbourne, six regions are identified, right? Six regions. And we've recommended that those six regions be reactivated and that the local government groups within those regions work collaboratively with the property industry, with their communities, and with the state government to work out what can be built where under the kind of place-making process we've talked about. And that will get, that will get the answer that we need, we believe.
And to add to that, you know, Melbourne 2030 was based on the idea of removing political risk by actually talking to people and bringing in a process whereby everyone had their say and we could, we could actually start to deliver the kinds of numbers. The, I guess the disappointment was that, at the time, the minister decided that local government would be the organisation to deliver it, which clearly they struggled to do. But it's, it, this issue about talking to people is absolutely critical to the certainty that's established in order to start to deliver at numbers.
They seem to be afraid of bringing the community with them. Anyway, perhaps that's a comment. So I think you touched on Professor Buxton, some of the reasons why we haven't got housing, perhaps, availability at the moment. got housing, perhaps availability at the moment. And it goes to the costs of producing housing because of the taxes, charges, regulations, all the various tapes and kongos that are involved in, in getting a, a development up and running. And we know, and you probably know, of the number of developments that have been approved by councils. I can think of Whitehurst, for example, over 700,000 of houses in, in that area approved, but nobody's going to market because that product will be unaffordable to anybody and, and won't produce even a viable profit for the, for the developers. So the, the problem is not housing availability, it's clearly there. It's the cost of producing that product to market. And that's a state government problem, isn't it? Of their own making.
Well, it's, it's, it is in part, but then the costs of construction.
As well as that. Everybody's on the big bill.
Are a matter for the, so there, I mean, there are, I mean, the development industry is telling us that it's, that it is, it is economic to be building, say, three-story, high-cost, high-priced apartments in the really expensive suburbs. So you can see them all along
Yeah.
Malvern, Armidale, and so on. You can see them along the main roads in the, in the, in, in the appropriate residential zone. The residential growth zone has been used for that purpose. But they're selling for, you know, between two and sometimes three and a half million dollars, right?
Hardly affordable housing.
That's not affordable. So the development industry is saying, yes, that's all that is economic to build. They're building it and it is selling. The real issue is how can we get affordable housing in the mix in those suburbs as well as everywhere else? That's the aim that we want. And what we're saying is, just by regarding old houses and heritage houses and high-amenity places as the main inhibitor to affordable housing, has got it all wrong. We've got to adopt different techniques to get affordable housing through building different types of dwellings, right?
Maybe two-on-one footprint.
Well, one of the problems the development industry is saying is that it's one type. Building apartments is not necessarily going to be the answer. We've got to get a mix of dwelling types. It's much cheaper to build townhouse development than a lot of apartment construction, you know?
There's also
I'm going to stop you there.
I may, sorry, we're really running against the clock at this point, so forgive me for
that. Mrs. Watts.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you, Professor Buxton, Mr. Holsworth, and Mr. Thorney, I think it is. Hello, and thanks for being with us today. I wanted to go to townhouses particularly because, as you know, that's something that we're investigating as part of our inquiry today. And what I have seen, having looked at your submission and reading a little bit about your group, is some critique of the government on investments around infrastructure near, and homes, homes and infrastructure. And I'm just wanting to go to comments that have been made about Shanghai Towers and higher-density living, but then I'm also hearing that you're pro-densification. So I must confess, I'm trying to work out exactly where you are on a number of issues today. Where is it if, where is it that homes should be built that are dense, if not near, public transport projects like the SRL?
We're not saying that houses shouldn't be built close to amenities and public transport at all. We're saying that the, the sites should be selectively, selectively chosen in keeping with values of, of the neighbourhoods around them. And after all, that was the original purpose of ResCode. There was, there were objectives in ResCode related to neighbourhood character protection and so on for ResCode. So we're saying they're not contradictory objectives, so long as the work is put in to identify the development opportunities and to match those opportunities with the type of housing that's appropriate, right? So in some cases, I mean, look, as an example.
Yes, please.
Let's take the, let's take all the traditional shopping centres of Melbourne, the Victorian shopping centres, right? Lots of, lots of two-story shops.
Yeah.
The approach at the moment, the Activity Centre Zone or Commercial One Zone, they're being pulled down and they will continue to be pulled down, and medium-to-high-rise buildings will be constructed behind them. And under the government's plan, they'll be in the core activity centres. You're going to have up to 20 stories discretionary, so it's not just going to stop at 20 stories if, if past experience is a guide. So there's going to be high-rise and they'll be pulled down. Now, we're saying, we've come up with a formula just on that, that there can be significant development at the rear of those shops, retaining the, not just the facade, but a 12-meter setback, a 13.5-meter height control at the back. They mainly face onto lanes, so you're going to have a lot of development. We've quantified that. And just from that one selective process of working out what you can build where, you can retain your heritage asset, which by the way is a really major economic benefit for those areas as well, and you can still get a lot of development in there. So that's the approach that we're saying, approach, approach it that way across the
So I'm understanding that when it comes to, you know, strip shops and heritage shops, but what about around public transport? What's the feelings or attitudes of Charter 29 towards densification around public transport areas like trains and trams and others? I'm just trying to understand.
If you can, if you can find, look, really
Which are often right near the shops.
Terrific example of this is Malvern Central today, right? Go down there today. And there's 15-story and a 17-story towers built, right? Right next to the station between, between the highway and, and the station, right? And now, I mean, that's higher than what we believe is probably desirable, but the point is it's gone in and it's, it's, and by the way, they're, they're finding it difficult to sell some of those with the cost and so on. They are. So there's a whole, there's a big cost issue with it as well, and that's what we're coming to. But they've got development there. And if you can do that and identify where you can build and you retain a street like Len Ferry Road, which is one of Melbourne's iconic streets, why pull that down? So we're saying, do the work and identify where you can build and what is appropriate to build there, and we can get, we can get the amounts.
So when you view that high-rise apartment buildings are not appropriate in areas like Malvern, or I'm thinking similarly areas that come to mind, the alternative approaches that you're suggesting, does that include townhouses?
Sure.
And
The full range.
And you're supporting then more townhouses being built across Melbourne or in certain settings? Or where do you lay your support towards townhouses in particular?
I think the quality of place is very important in this and local identity. And, and so that's kind of missing from this conversation, is, is the quality of place. You know, in, in terms of the complexity of urban places, employment's also part of that story. And we use a sort of a rule of thumb that if you, to generate employment, you have to attract those folks who can choose to live anywhere.
Yeah.
And that turns around the quality of place. And that doesn't necessarily mean that you knock everything down and replace it by apartments and townhouses. You've actually got to provide the quality of place in order to make places attractive. Otherwise, we're just building commuter suburbs to somewhere else.
And does quality of place include keeping strong intergenerational cultural ties to areas? And I think about areas like Oakleigh, for example, that has strong intercultural ties to the Greek community, and it's an area that I know well. If it is that we don't consider alternative housing that allows intergenerational Greek community to stay there, are we not then losing culture and the thing, the very thing that you're trying to protect? I'm interested in if you've got any views on that.
We're not arguing against development, by the way. We're actually arguing for development, but how you do it is critical.
And the how must involve not just housing, but the elements that make up a community that includes social outlets, you know, local employment and housing that is at an affordable price. Futsgrave, we just mentioned Malvern, but Futsgrave, an area where land values are cheaper, a lot of land around the railway station and to the north of it, around the Franco-Cotso area.
Yes, yes.
Why, you know, apartments have gone up there, but that's an example of the potential of an old brownfields area that can be redeveloped. The economics I don't fully understand, and we all know the issues of housing and making it work. But that's a brilliant place, Futsgrave, as an opportunity to use good public transport, good community, good cultural background, et cetera, et cetera, to really build a, a range of housing types from high to medium to townhouse developments. And if they can be economic when the economic circumstance changes, we've got to be able to ensure that that does happen.
See, this is, I'm afraid we're going to have to leave it there. Terrible, sorry. Could I, could I, on behalf of the committee, could I thank you very much for coming in today on very short notice? It was a very thoughtful contribution.
Yes.
Could I just note that you will receive a copy of the transcript for review in about a week before it's published on the website? And the committee will now take a break, and we'll be back shortly with Professor Andrew Butt from RMIT. So we'll see people soon, and thank you very much.
Thank you.